I pray, our Father in heaven, we thank you for another beautiful day you've given us. We thank you for many blessings you've given us. We ask now to watch over these proceedings and to be pleased with you. We ask that you'll watch over the employees and the citizens of Scottsboro as they go about their daily business. We ask that you watch over the military and bring them home safely to their families. God guide and direct us so in the end we may come to thee, in Jesus' name, amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the House of Representatives, Judge Mead, JCS contract recommendation. Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank the council and the mayor for giving me an opportunity to be here today and allowing me to be the city judge. Thank you. Basically, here on the JCS issues that have come before, not just our city, but several municipalities within the state, there's the lawsuit that's pending, and I have received a copy of the response from the Southern Law Poverty Center and the motion to dismiss based on judicial correction services by Stephen Raymond and their attorneys. I have talked to Mr. Kenner Murray, the city attorney, and I've had an opportunity to go to several meetings throughout the state about the JCS issue, and I'd like to let our city council and the city of Scottsboro know that we are not doing the things that are alleged in this complaint that's been brought before, JCS or against JCS. We have complied with the rules and regulations that are set out. We are not putting people in jail for not paying. We are making certain that we are following the guidelines. But I will do whatever the city council suggests that we do. I do want to let you know that they have done an awesome job for the city of Scottsboro since we've, or since this council has signed a contract with them. I'd just like to give you some numbers, basically tell you where they were at. But before I do that, I want to let you know what we collected in 2005. We collected, or the city of Scottsboro and the municipal clerk's office collected $530,000. 2014, that number went up to $879,000. So they increased the revenue for the municipal clerk's office by over $350,000. Now, if we lose to ACS and we don't have that opportunity to continue to work with them, we are going to lose a little bit of that revenue to begin with. It's going to be very difficult for three members of our municipal clerk's office to do the work of five that are working over there with JCS. We'll do exactly what this council asks us to do. And I'm letting you know that it's going to be difficult, and we're going to lose some revenue to begin with, but we'll make it work one way or the other. I would like to let the council members know that at some point I will probably ask them for additional help to compensate for what those five people are doing with JCS, if you choose to, to eliminate their contract. But it's going to be difficult for our clerk's office, our municipal clerk. There's three wonderful girls and ladies that are working in that office, and they're doing an awesome job, and each one of them worked very hard every day. But I don't believe that we can do the work of those five other people that we may have moved. But I do want to emphasize that we are not doing what the lawsuit has been filed against other municipalities, but it is a bullseye on the back of those municipalities, and I don't want our city council or our city to have that. But I do want to let you know if it comes our way, that we're not doing those things that are alleged in this lawsuit against them. JCS has done a wonderful job, as I've stated before. I can tell you that just in the month of June, June 1st, June 19, they collected 583 payments, and they've seen 866 defendants in their office alone just for about a 19-day timeframe. For our office or for the municipal clerk's office to do that with the three personnel that we have would be very difficult. So at some point, we are going to have to need some assistance. And with that being said, I'd like to open the door. Questions that you would have asked me, that I'd like to ask at this time? Anyone have any questions for Judge Mead?
I don't have a question, but I have a statement, I guess. And I appreciate you coming in. I appreciate what y'all do. But we met, had a meeting with, they brought someone in to represent the company to meet with us, and talk with us. And we asked a number of questions of this person. The first question was the statement made by him, which wasn't really a question, but he made a statement that they had collected this $900,000.
Yes, sir.
So the next thing is I asked him, "How much did y'all make of this? Some people have said $900,000." He didn't know. He said he didn't have that information. And we asked about a half a dozen more questions, all of which he didn't know. I'm sure they could have sent a speech back saying we collected $900,000, and done just as good as the one person that's saying. I guess it would have helped, my thinking was a lot, if someone could have come and been prepared to answer a basic question about that question.
Well, I'm not going to stand here and defend JCS, but I can tell you that we did call a meeting. It was an impromptu type session, and he was given very little opportunity to defend them. I know that the day after, we had our brief meeting in the mayor's office, they filed a response to the lawsuits that have been filed and his motion to dismiss. And I want to say that went through, well, I believe the mayor actually received a copy of that, and it went through the middle district.
They all have this copy, yes.
So y'all have a copy of that response that they had, but that was not there, and he didn't have an opportunity. Again, I'm not trying to stand here and defend his actions, but we did ask his several questions, and he did not have the response.
Yeah, and I thought, especially with that part, how much did you get versus how much the city? That would have probably been a question that we would have asked.
I can stand here and tell you that I know that they charge a $10 setup fee, that they charge a $35 a month monitoring fee. Now, beyond what they charge on monthly monitoring fee, I can't stand before the council until what they've gained as far as earnings are concerned. I know they have to maintain an office here in the city of Scottsboro in which they pay taxes on. I know that they also employ four full-time employees here in the city of Scottsboro with additional part-time employees. So I'm assuming they make quite a bit of money at some point to compensate those employees and to pay their bills that they have here in an office just down the street from here. He did not answer your questions or the questions that the mayor or her others had in the office, and I wish he'd had it, because I think it would have helped you, you know, assist you today.
Oh, he did. Maybe later responded, said, "Thank you."
Yes, sir.
I wouldn't say this, Judge, that they called and set that up on Wednesday. So it was not like a last-minute thing. They called Wednesday, wanted to come on Monday. So it's just, they could have prepared, as I'm saying, they had the time.
I believe they did have an opportunity, and in a couple days, they could have shot some of that paperwork together and had the ability to answer some of those questions, especially with the financial aspect.
Yeah, I've given them to see, and they brought to me, because they called and scheduled. We didn't ask for it, it was something they.
I wasn't there. Okay, thanks, sir. So anyone else have any questions?
Just been, you said in 2005, we, as an organization, collected $530,000?
The magistrate's office.
Yes, sir. Out of what some was outstanding, you know, what is our miss rate of collections when we, when we are doing that function?
As far as the miss rate?
We collected $530,000 out of what was, what was the potential?
I'm going to have to turn and ask the question.
And then my next question would be, of the 879,000, how much was outstanding?
Ms. Star. I'm going to allow Ms. Star, if I may, to answer that question.
We've actually, there were two of us, there was 4,353 cases that year. That was one of our largest years. Claire and I did payments. She was the court clerk. I was not at the time. That was one of our biggest years ever. As far as what was outstanding, as far as warrants and things like that, I can tell you this, as far as payments go, we had two metal folders. Now, JCS has 840 defendants on payments. By the end of this month, they will have up to 1,000. But as of August 1, will be turned over to the court system. I can probably tell you that Claire and I probably had at the most 100 payments, and we only have court once a month. We have it every week. So we've grown, you know, pretty much, and then we only had, out of the 500,000, last year we had 4,194 cases, which is almost 200 less than we did in '05. We did a total in '05, 3,558 receipts. Last year, total of 10,289 receipts. So you're taking a staff of seven that's collecting money, and come August 1, that would be placed at 30. So we will have a significant loss in revenue. I mean, it's pretty much, it's nothing that we, you know, unless, and I don't even know if manpower, we're going to have to figure out how to take over the payments of the thousand that's already set up and do our day-to-day, every court activity.
Wouldn't it be hard to answer part of that question about how much was outstanding for both? These things go back to some kind of 20 years for the total?
As far as warrants?
Yes, sir, that is absolutely correct. That's owed, or there's some outstanding debts that folks are.
They've frozen that.
That's exactly right, sir.
You can hardly figure all that and keep it?
Well, we do, we do, but we go through cold cases. We don't have warrants dated back over 15 years. We go through them and have cold cases. I mean, you can't keep up with these old, old warrants. But out of that deficit, out of the saying, the, what's actually owed as far as warrants, actually, the city only gets a percentage out of that. Say at one time it was 2 million, the city only gets like 600,000. The rest is state. It's court costs.
Ms. Star, could I ask some questions?
Yes.
If I had a $20 parking ticket, so I have a warrant for that drop truck, receipt ticket illegally parked in a parking lot across the way to the traffic and lanes, I'll be ordered to pay $20 fine. What will my court cost be?
If it's put on a UTC?
Yes.
The court cost would be 175.
I'll have $175 that the state legislature mandates to recharge its court costs, when the city of Scottsboro mandates to recharge its court costs. How much does the city of Scottsboro get?
They will get the $20 fine and 25.50 for the jail fine.
So 45.50.
Add 195, total.
And all that money the city gets, most of it goes to the jail, right?
Yes, sir.
If I cannot pay the fine within 30 days, I then am required to go to JCS, correct?
No, no, sir. We, normally they say enough.
And 95 percent of the cases, if I can't pay that fine at that time, I have to go and sign to this?
Not after 30 days, no, sir. It's immediately, as soon as they go to court, and they cannot pay it.
Are you, are you wearing the minimum contract with the city and JCS gives 30 days for which you pay?
That is correct.
Yes, that is correct.
So 30 days after I'm sentenced, if I can't pay it, I'm required to go to JCS, correct?
Yes, sir.
Am I required to pay a $10 fee?
That is correct. $10 setup fee that goes.
What if I don't have $10 because I can't pay the fine?
JCS has agreed to waive those fines on certain circumstances and certain situations.
Who makes that decision?
JCS.
Or what about JCS?
JCS office.
I am then required to pay $35 a month, and I can't afford to pay my $100,000 fine cost, and I am then required to pay $35 a month, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, all that's perfectly legal.
Yes, sir. And that's true, and they have asked.
It'd be fair to say that 70% of the money outstanding is not owed to the city of Scottsboro. It's owed to the state's attorneys' funds, or clerk's fund, the state forensic fund for this, the state forensic fund for that, and all of these kinds of funds, most of which did not exist in 1975. And court cost was considerably less in 1975.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sir. Any other questions? Mr. Kenner Murray, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation, I have to speak to the council, is that the city terminate its contract with JCS. I do not believe, I have no independent knowledge that JCS here has done anything violation of law.
That's right.
I have no information that the municipal court has done anything that I think is a violation. I do know that JCS, through some other purposes, has alleged to have done some pretty horrible things, and I know that those things did not happen here because I know the staff here, and I know the people that are involved here, and known for a fact they didn't happen. But I do not think it is a wise thing to go with a target on your back, and the Southern Poverty Law Center looking at and threatening to sue, and the United States Department of Justice threatening to look into them. And I think it's best not to be involved in that kind of situation. So it would be my recommendation with the city. This is the same thing I told the guy from JCS, when they're, when they're a week or two or three ago, when we asked for information, none of which has been provided yet. We need to sever the relationship, and that would be not a good relationship with the council.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for giving us an opportunity to be here. Thank you. We'll put it on next week's agenda. Next item is the fire department budget amendment. Ms. Phillips, can you go ahead?
The fire department is requesting a budget amendment for $9,990. They have received notification of the award of Alabama Homeland Security funding for two thermal imaging cameras. The amount will be 100% reimbursed on the state, but they have to have the equipment in towards July 31st.
Does anyone have any questions for Jeanne? If we make this budget amendment, this will become an eligible fund? Mayor, where would that come from?
I mean, it would be a wash, and they had it 100% reimbursed.
We would pay it upfront, and then it's just reimbursed.
It's coming back to you. So, so the reimbursement will go back to you, replace it?
Yeah, that's the intent.
Okay, thank you.
When we talk, I ask, in fact, to, at that time, I don't think you.
And I, and I still can't tell you for sure, because in the past, sometimes it's been two to three months or more with the state returning reimbursement funds. But I did tell you, and I still believe, this is actually money from 2013 that we allocated. So I feel, I get the impression from the state that they're trying to get this cleared up quick. So I believe it'll be quicker than two or three months, but I can't promise you anything. That's, that's on there.
I would like to say, we would like to thank Representative Tommy Haynes of the legislative delegation. He was the one who made us aware, and Chief Nicholas aware of the grant and the funding that was out there and available. And so he kind of put us on that. We appreciate his, his helping acquiring these funds.
That's true, and maybe locally, it might take up some time.
Any other questions for Jeanne? I'll put that on next week's agenda as well. Thank you, Jeanne.
Thank you.
Next item is Attorney George Hartline, JCS issues.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. I'm George Hartline. I'm Attorney in care of Scottsboro, and I represent a lot of indigent defendants that are unable to, a lot of times, pay the fees. And one of the things that, when I look at this, the JCS, is it's a for-profit, you know, private company. And so you have folks who are told their own probation, and they, and really, this was kind of outlined in the complaints that was filed by the Southern Poverty Law Center, was that the people believe that they are under threat of incarceration, and there's an indirect threat of incarceration. And I think Councilman Lewis Smith said it best when, you know, you ask simple questions, "Where's the money?" and nobody can answer. And that's where I feel like you have a real problem, is where there's no accountability. And so I personally have clients currently who, and multiple clients, who have told me that they, for example, paid money into something, and it was supposed to have been returned. Whether or not that comes under JCS or not, I don't really know. I, I don't know a whole lot about JCS. A lot of these things are kind of just murky to us, some of us lawyers. They never teach us about this stuff, you know what I mean? They, you know, they teach us about the laws, and they teach us about this, but a lot of this stuff we learn as we go. And especially when it comes to sentencing, when it comes to fines, when it comes to probation, issues regarding what, you know, client goes, "What's this mean?" And they say, "Court costs, what does that mean?" I say, "I don't know. I don't even, you know, what are the court costs? Let's go find out. You ask somebody, and they tell you to ask somebody else." So to me, it's, and the other thing that led to the complaint was that it never publicly bid. In other words, there was never a public chance for multiple bids from different companies to provide these services, which, that would have decreased some of the scrutiny, I think, as well. What I would ask for the city council to do, if, I mean, I would go along with Attorney Kenner Murray in saying that I think the best thing to do would be to discontinue the contract with them, based on my experience in urging defendants who are believing that they will go to jail if they aren't able to pay these things. And it becomes a vicious cycle. So we have over a kind of jails and prisons, and people go back in, come back out, go back in, come back out. And a lot of times, it has to do with monies. At least that's been my experience. And so I think that, along with the discontinue from that company, I would also request that there would be full disclosure from, and in cooperation with the city, I'm sure they're willing, magistrate's office, the court, and the JCS vaults, before everything's cut off and severed and sent away, that there would be a full accounting of all monies, and that that be provided to y'all and anyone else that's entitled to see it. And that way, we can know that we here in Scottsboro aren't like plants, and we do the wrong things, and we do the right things. And I'm sure everybody has that same belief in mind, but I don't want to get off the JCS topics, but I feel like this is important in all aspects of any kind of receipts of money with the courts, that there be accountability, that there be some kind of process established so that folks can know. Like, in other words, if someone posts a full bail, a full bond, pays a full bond, show up in court, in other words, they don't buy a bail 10%, they pay the full amount. So they say it's $400 to make sure you can come back to court. And then you come back to court and show up, and you don't get that $400 back, and then it kind of just gets lost in the system. What I would request is that that not happen, that that be, that be some kind of process in place so that folks can know where that money is, whether they get it back or not. You know, I don't know if they are entitled to it or not, but a lot of times, it seems clear to me that if the bond says, you pay this in order to get out of jail so that you make sure you come back to court, and then you come back to court, you can get that money back. That's just one example. So I don't know a whole lot. I'm a section boy, born and raised, alcoholic, two years sober. I have my run-ins with the wrong crowd and the wrong, making mistakes. And I ain't no legal scholar. I just try to help people. I want to help people. I want to see Scottsboro become a place that people look to all over the country and say, "Wow, look at that little place right there." Make it happen. I love that. I love to see revived Scottsboro, and I love to see, you know, all the different things. We have a library to Google, you know. It's wonderful, at least county by, you know, we're talking about Scottsboro, but still, it affects us here, too. And I'm a carpet bagger, I'm from section, so if we get it, hopefully. I just want the right thing to do, and I believe that people want that, too. I believe all y'all got that. And so I hope and pray that, that we'll be proactive and that there will be some kind of action taken to make sure that there's accountability, even if we do discontinue JCS, that there be some kind of accountability for all monies before everything's done, so that we know where everything is, and everything's clean, otherwise, you know. Thank you.
So anyone have any questions? Sorry, George.
Can I make a couple comments regarding what the statement was, briefly?
Sure.
And you talked about JCS and not having an open contract. I believe that it was actually several companies that, not this particular council, had an opportunity to review and to choose, but I believe, if I'm not mistaken, back in 2005, there was more than just one company that came for the city council and asked to be considered for this particular position, as far as collecting for fees for the magistrate's office or the court system. So there wasn't just JCS there, there were others out there. And as far as the full disclosure, our office or the magistrate's office has always been open, and I believe we could, we were here in city hall. JCS has always been open with us, and anytime we needed money, or as far as how that money is accounted for, they've always given that to us. So if there's an opportunity, if the city council wants to look at the books, if you will, I'm sure they're open, and we can have that provided to this city council.
That's true. Judge Mead is correct, and that all city monies, everything collected by the magistrate's office is subject to audit and full disclosure, which is what we issued there. Anything collected by some private entity, I can't speak to. But I do know that the star and her staff have done their job, and are subject to audit internally and externally.
Thank you. Next item on the Bridget Schrader, the Hospital Church of Christ, Jesus Christ Road Block, down here. Bridget Schrader. We've got item number five, Goose Pond Trail. Mayor?
Thank you. You have in your packets a map. Mr. Kenner Murray, I'm sorry, I didn't have, you didn't have one, but, so, anyway, you have a picture of a map of Goose Pond. You'll see the civic center there in the lower center of the picture. We applied, we've been talking to TBA for the last year or so about being able to extend the walking trail from just behind the civic center all the way around, actually to the pumping station on 79 there. We have received that approval, or in the process of getting permitted to do a trail. We are, we were wanting to apply for a grant from ADCA for a recreational trail program that will extend that trail from behind Goose Pond Civic Center all the way to 79. Josh, is that almost a mile? Is that close to it?
Close to it.
5,000?
Okay.
Again, this is, we just need a resolution allowing us to apply for a $100,000 grant, which is due by July 31. And again, TBA is working with us on this. TBA is... And again, TBA is working with us on this, TBA has been very cooperative and even have said that they may be able to help us with some financial aspects of this. And so, Jim, you're a former board member, but, or Mr. Kenner or somebody, it's, it's my understanding that the part from the civic center back to 79 is actually the city's, is that right? Okay, so I wouldn't have to go before the board, although we would let them know, but it's no formal thing from the board that needs to be done. We'll certainly let them know, we've got that file. But it would be, I think, something that would enhance the area down there and then hopefully in the future, we could extend it on down to, to the bridge of the pumping station there on 79.
Are there any questions? You said this was connected with the existing one behind?
Yes, it would just start right behind the civic center and extend all the way to 79.
So you said we needed a resolution for?
Yes, for next week, just, just a resolution allowing us to apply for the grant.
All right, we'll put that on next week's agenda. We'll go to the boards, mayor.
Um, I mean.
Mr. Wallace.
Just hope everyone had a great Fourth of July weekend. I was able to see the fireworks at Goose Pond, they did a, did a good job, weather permitting. It was a little bit different, going off from a different location, so we might have to adjust our, our viewing area, so. But they did a, did a very good job. That's all I got, glad you, you got a beer.
Mr. Smith.
We, I want to talk to you about, while you were gone, you mentioned the dog park, so we get the dog. And since that time, I found it's a real nice place to meet people and sit and talk, whatever they do. So I'd like to say a lot more people use that facility. I think you get to know a lot of people and the dogs get to know a lot of dogs and everybody you meet. It is a very exciting facility for a town outside. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Everybody noticed.
Mr. Melo.
I'd just like to say that we still have the nine-year-old Dizzy Dean State baseball championship going on this weekend in town. I think they got ringed out Friday, but they play Saturday, Sunday, playing again today, I believe tomorrow and Wednesday. So they'll be here several days, so that's good. The finals, I believe, are Wednesday, so we're open, Scottsboro will be in those finals come Wednesday night.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out, we have good crowd tonight. And with Brent bringing up the baseball tournament, they, there were several folks, including Brent, that, they did some bags for the visiting teams and it went over very well. A lot of the local businesses donated items or had sale with coupon in it or whatever. But all the teams were talking and expressing their gratitude for getting something like that, because that's something that typically don't get going to the tournament. So we're doing a good job, the ranked department, they had to move it from bottom to veterans. And it took a lot of, a lot of people involved to get that done, and they've done an outstanding job, they need to be better than that. Our nine-year-olds have had a field battle, we got beat last night, and their defense stayed tuned, and they'll have to come from behind, so we'll root them on tonight. We'd like some support out there too, so. For that, Paul Jordan, thank y'all.